...the church. And we'll have what's got some troop three tent because of the flag.
Thank you, your honor. I was concerned that you didn't have a lawyer sitting at your right hand and I didn't know how this was going to work. And I did want to say, you know, I'm sure God made heaven and earth in seven days and you guys have been on that bathroom for a year and a half.
Longer than that.
It's always an amazing thing to watch democracy work, particularly when we're able to communicate our ideas one another in a forum where we're civil to each other and the winners take their places. I know the election hasn't been certified, but I just congratulate those who won and those who competed. Our community is better when we have multiple people who bring those ideas forward and I just appreciate everybody who's involved with that process. And then, of course, then the hard thing then is for us to meld all those differing ideas to something that serves the best and makes us to be more than we thought we could be. Gracious God, we give you thanks for these men and women who gather and do this work. It's difficult work. It's work sometimes that gains them no friends. And so we just pray that you'd make them, that you'd just bless them and that you would cause them to redouble their efforts to be all, that we'd be all that we could be as a community, that we would serve the least and the lost and take no pride in the failure of others, but that we would join our hearts together and lend our minds and our voices to speak for truth and justice and be that which America was created to be. I pray a blessing on those who will leave after the certification and another meeting or so and those who ascend and we just pray that what will happen as a result of that is that Green Valley will be an even better place to live and worship and play and work. So bless them in their work tonight and call them, give them wisdom beyond their own understanding and courage to act on it. We pray it in the name of the one who made us in that way, in the name of Jesus. Amen.
The police scouts come on up and present the flag.
Absolut. Please repeat with me the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a routine and justice for all.
Okay, next on my agenda is the approval of the agenda.
No changes.
Move on to decision participation now. We ask assistants to go forward to the microphone and code you and please address the board. Do we have any assistants who wish to address the board this evening?
Hello, I'm Sheila Arnold, 31603 East Ryan Road, and I come to brag tonight on our police department again. Building Block's daycare was once again privileged to have request and have the police department come over and block traffic so our kids could go across the street and do what they call their Easter bonnet parade. If you've ever seen kids in strange hats, that would be my children. They love it. They really appreciated the guys coming out and even all the high fives that the officers gave. So I want to let you know, they're still doing good by us.
Zach Prossen, I'm a local business owner. I just wanted to take a moment to express gratitude now that the election's over for everyone that participated in the election and the people that took the time to run and campaign. And I thought it was a good election this year. I know that you guys on the board put a whole lot of work in it and oftentimes it goes unappreciated and I just, you know, I want to say thank you, you do a good job. For the challengers that did not get elected this year, I hope that they remain active in the community and I appreciate them running as well. And, you know, I hope nobody gets discouraged and continues to be, you know, a part of our growing community. Lastly, Alderman Beebe, if I'm not here in the next meeting, I just wanted to personally thank you for the time that you've served.
Thank you very much.
Does anyone else that wants to address the board? Seeing none, move on to the agenda.
I move that we accept the agenda.
Have most of the policemen to accept the agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Headley. Any discussion? Seeing none, all therapists say aye.
Aye.
All pose same sign. Seeing no proclamations or presentations, we'll move on to 2012 firework sales permits. And we will go through these one at a time in case someone has any questions about the specific one. First one up is Grand Valley Athletic Association. Do they have all their needed forms and paperwork in terms of?
No.
Do we have a representative here for? Does anyone have any questions for GBAA about their firework stand?
Same location, back off street.
I have a motion to approve then. Motion, Walden Headley, to approve the GBAA's permits. Do I have a second? Second, second, Alderman Schaefer. Any discussion?
Is the furnace hydrant from that location where they're at? And will the city be checking to make sure they're operable in case we deal with this?
I think there'd be more on the city fire marshal.
I probably would ask that question for all those.
I mean, if they come and check our tent, they should be checking those fire hydrants.
I actually, I just didn't know where it physically was from that location. I just didn't know how far away it was.
Do we know if they'll check that because we heard election day, the city's, I guess it's the city's job to check the hydrants?
We exercise.
Okay.
We maintain them. But when the, when the fire district comes out to inspect, they do an inspection on your tent.
Right, yeah.
And when they come out to do that inspection, they should be locating the nearest fire hydrant, actually one basically upstream, one downstream.
Okay.
And make sure.
And we exercise all those, so we got that.
Yeah.
Any additional discussion? Seeing none, all therapists say aye.
Aye.
All pose the same sign.
Aye.
Next one is Grand Valley's Banned Parents Association. Do they have all needed paperwork?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have a representative from? Do I have a motion to approve the Grand Valley Banned Parents Association permits? Motion, Walden Headley. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Totten. Any questions or discussion?
Where is the tent physically located?
The tent is going to be physically located between the Comfort Inn Hotel and the empty building that the Custom Cruisers used to be in. I think they're right around the corner. We measured all the distances and it's going to be within the limits that are required, 100 feet away from the hotel and 100 feet away from that vacant building and there's a fire hydrant right then in that cowl lot as well.
Any additional questions or discussion? All therapists approve, please say aye.
Aye.
All pose the same sign.
Thank you.
Okay, next one is Grand Valley Chamber of Commerce. Again, do they have all the information turned in?
And they have all the information, but their, their insurance and all that.
We can't get our insurance. We can't actually get a copy or get a physical working insurance until 30 days prior to the, the fourth.
Fourth of May.
Yeah. So, and that's through not-not, that's who we've been going through for the last, since I've been at the chamber. So I don't have a policy, but I did furnish what we have every year.
And they will furnish it once they exceed it.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the permit for Grand Valley Chamber of Commerce? Motion, Walden Headley. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman West. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all therapists say aye.
Aye.
All pose the same sign. All right, thank you. Seeing no previous business. New business, we have the free fill lease agreements.
At the direction of the Board of Aldermen at budget time, one of the questions that many of you had was regarding the amount of money being spent on copiers on an annual basis. And so what we did was, we went out, we looked at annual contracts that are available to us. One particular was U.S. Communities contract. It has been competitively bid and they came in and they reviewed all of our equipment and to look at doing away with the Toshiba's that we currently have and making it a Rico machine to Icon, that's the information that you're seeing here, with an estimated three year savings of around $20,000. I'm putting this to you right now under new business. You don't have any actions in front of you this evening. You will see this, however, in two weeks on a double read. If we take advantage of their rate structure now, we'll be able to, before the end of April, we'll be able to see a reduced rate. If we wait till after the first part of May, it would be at an increased rate. We've been trying to work, we've been working on this since the end of the year, trying to get all of this worked out. One of our Toshiba copiers actually is still under lease and part of the agreement that Icon has is that they would actually do the purchase and the buyout of that lease. And so we're in the process now of getting what those terms are and that's taking longer to get that from a Toshiba than we thought, but we do plan on having these contracts in front of you in two weeks. And so I just wanted to prepare you and let you know that that was coming. No.
All right. We'll move on to ordinances now.
Bill B. 12-18, second reading. It will be ordinance 2219 and ordinance authorizing the city administrator to enter into an agreement with the Missouri State Highway Patrol for the use of the criminal justice information systems network. Second reading, ordinance 2219.
I move that we accept Bill number B, oh, B 12-18 and make it ordinance 2219 for a second reading.
I motion, Alderman Totten, to approve Bill 12-18 for its second reading. Make it ordinance 2219. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Scully. Any discussion? Seeing none, all therapists say aye.
Aye.
All pose the same sign.
West.
Yes.
Schaefer.
Yes.
Headley.
Yes.
Beebe.
Yes.
Scully.
Yes.
Totten.
Yes.
6-0, Mayor. Bill B. 12-20, second reading. It will be ordinance 2220, 2220, and ordinance approving TIFF revenue forecasting services to real estate research consultants. Second reading, ordinance 2220.
I move that we accept Bill number B 12-20 for second reading and make it 2220.
I motion, Alderman Scully, to approve Bill 12-20 for its second reading. Make it ordinance 2220. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Headley. Any discussion?
I just have a question. Is this one we have used before in the past? Is this one we have used always?
No, this has never been done before. This was a new request for qualifications. So there were other individuals that did provide us with estimates. One of the individuals was IRR and unfortunately, when it came time to actually look at them and talk to them about coming in and providing that service, they had to pull their proposal. They had had a reduction in staff and didn't have the staffing to be able to provide these services to us. So then we looked at the real estate consultants and did the background on them and they were adequate and acceptable and.
And how long is this contract with them?
It's to provide the services. It's throughout the TIFF project, so as additional contracts are signed through the developer, they will actually look at those and provide additional revenue forecasting for those services.
So the full-time for 20 years or whatever?
Oh, no, not through that. Through the, this is through the contracting portion within the next probably two years or so.
So look at, again, additional costs then, so this, I mean, this is $65,000?
Well, no, that's, that's on the top end because this is used as needed, so it's a not to exceed that amount for these services until such time. That's once the whole area is completely full and they've done the forecasting for each of those markets, for each of those facilities that would be full. That's the hope.
You're saying for all four corners or just the one?
Just the one in the northeast corner. As he has all of that retail area that he's proposing to put in and businesses come, they will do like forecasting, revenue forecasting for those markets.
So it's not just for the movie yet?
Right, that's correct.
Because they aren't in it, but there is right now.
That's correct.
Additional questions or discussion? Seeing none, all therapists say aye.
Aye.
All pose the same sign.
Beebe.
Yes.
Headley.
Yes.
Schaefer.
Yes.
Scully.
Yes.
Totten.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Bill B. 12-22, first reading. An ordinance authorizing the city administrator to purchase a prefabricated park restroom from CXT Incorporated. First reading, Bill B. 12-22.
I move that we accept Bill B. 12-22 for its first reading and bring it back for its second reading by Tyler.
I motion, Alderman Headley, to accept Bill 12-22 for its first reading and bring it back by Tyler for its second reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Scully. Any discussion?
I think staff did a good job of saving, saving some money by going back a second time. I, it was, took us a year and a half to get it done, almost two years, but at least we know we done it right. I appreciate the staff once again, all the effort and time you guys put into it. Thank you, Mayor.
Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all therapists say aye.
Aye.
All pose the same sign.
6-0, first read. Bill B. 12-23, first reading. An ordinance amending the budget to the city of Grand Valley, Missouri for fiscal year 2012. First reading, Bill B. 12-33.
I move that we accept Bill B. 12-23 for its first reading and bring it back by Tyler.
I motion, Alderman West, to approve Bill 12-23 for its first reading and bring it back by Tyler for its second reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Scully. Any discussion?
Could you guys walk through this?
Yeah. Last year, you'll recall that we did the bid for new finance software and that, that item was approved by this board. However, because it wasn't received until this fiscal year, it did not come out of last budget year, so it's coming out of this budget year. And so that transfer and adjustment needs to be made accordingly so that that item can be paid for.
Basically, it's a wash, right?
That's on one of the first items, pardon me?
Basically, it's just a wash.
Yeah. What we're doing is bringing that money out of fund balance and allocating it as an expense this year since we didn't spend it last year.
Right.
And then the second part on that is when the pond and the walking trails were generated over here and there was a buyout of the existing trailer lot, that came at an additional cost of $765,271. The way to cover that, because that was more than what you had in bond dollars, was to, the general fund basically loaned it to the GeoBond Fund to be able to pay for that. Realistically, the GeoBond Fund will never pay back general fund and so you need to do a permanent transfer from general fund to that. Prior year audits showed this as a due-to and due-from so that the books always balanced, but what it did was it, it did overinflate what your actual balance was in your general fund. That's why when we put into the ordinance, we wanted to be able to show you what the actual amount was and it's not actually on the ordinance, it's in the, thank you. It's on the memorandum attached to it that explained the background on this information and it showed that at the ti, at currently at this time, approximately March 20th, our fund balance for general fund will go from $2,554,640 to $1,789,370. And it's reducing it by that 700-plus thousand dollars in order to make everything balanced and that way we can stop showing it as a due-to and due-from and show what's truly on the books. One of the things, this is one of the areas that when Kathy first came on, they were finishing up the audit earlier this, or last year for the prior year's audit. Couldn't catch it in time to be able to do the adjustment at that time, but it was something that's been very important and, and with the onset of this, new auditors coming in this last week, they've been in for the last couple of weeks, we wanted to get this balanced and, and move forward.
Do we have any more of those on, on existence?
Any more?
Due-to to do.
Due-to, due-fronts now?
No, we cleaned up a couple, three of them last year through the end of the audit process, but we didn't exactly have enough information to totally clear this one up and wish her word was coming.
I know too that as you receive funds, you've got approximately eight acres of land that you can develop around the pond that's city-owned and should you ever have somebody that wants to come in and buy that land and to develop there, when that is paid, then that money would go into the general fund to reimburse the general fund.
Should there be some sort of verbitated disorders to state that? Can you commit that that way?
We could add it, but I mean, it doesn't need to be, there'll be accounting records showing that the money came from the general fund and it would be put back into the general fund.
Would you check and see, because I think Brian Pratt put into existence a ruling that anytime like the trailer park land situation, it could not be sold for profit any of it because that was on the books, one of the things. So I would check on that.
We could check on that.
I, I do recall that.
Additional discussion or questions? Seeing none, all therapists say aye.
Aye.
All pose the same sign.
6-0. Bill B. 12-24, first reading. An ordinance authorizing the city administrator to enter into an agreement with Tyler Technologies for the purchase and implementation of the utility billing online component and enhanced printing. First reading, Bill B. 12-24.
I move that we accept Bill B. 12-24 for its first reading and bring it back for its second reading by Tyler.
I motion, Alderman West, to approve Bill 12-24 for its first reading and bring it back by Tyler for its second reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Totten. Any discussion?
What's, what's going to be the savings if any on this, Alexa?
In this situation, we're looking at the fees that we pay to the credit card companies, being able to reduce those fees and I'm going to let Kathy speak to this because she's really wonderful.
By the time it's all said and done, the additional costs that you might pay for printing, the bill and the savings you'll get from your reduced credit card fees, it'll be around 600 to 650 a month in savings, but that allows you to give a full-page bill with more information on that bill for the customer, plus it will be a chance for us to send out mailers with our utility bills at no additional cost for posting. It would just cost two to three cents per sheet to print it and they'll stuff it and mail it right along and everybody will get one.
This is due to the new software that we?
This is part of the new software.
Part of the new software.
They'll design the, the bill based around our parameters that we give them and we'll have a, I think I included a sample of what we kind of wanted to do. It'll have the graph that shows you prior months, where you were at and what you used.
So we're kind of talking about two separate or, or bills here. We've got this one here that goes to Tyler Technology and then there's the one right behind it.
Right, they kind of go hand in hand.
Yeah, they do, go hand in hand so that we can do online utility billing and.
But without the enhanced printing piece of it, you can't do the outsourcing and print the graphs and so forth.
Kind of answers the question we talked about a couple times, how do we get more information out to the public?
It opens a whole new avenue for that.
Yeah, opens up a whole new door as far as being able to send out their water with their information.
Not moving to two lines?
Yeah.
Right, you won't be limited to two lines.
Actually send a flyer out with some good information instead of two lines.
Right.
And the bill looks pretty much like a CP Noble now.
Correct, it will look like one of those. It'll have the graphs comparing where you were last month and.
It'll give you a full month, a full year's worth by month of your usage and how you, so that you can look at this month and compare yourself to six months ago or a year ago.
So we save money and we get to advertise more.
How much is the length of the contract with this printer company?
It's ongoing until you want to.
There's no contract with them?
There'll be an agreement, but you have, it's ongoing till you give them a notice and they work hand in hand with ENCODE all over the country, so they're pretty familiar with the software.
I never want to do that, people. I just hear you have heard that before.
The one that we have now, it just keeps going after the first agreement and we have to give them 60 days' notice to, to stop that process.
Additional questions or discussion? Seeing none, all therapists say aye.
Aye.
All pose the same sign.
6-0, Mayor. First, Bill B. 12-25, first reading. An ordinance authorizing the city administrator to enter into an agreement with ParaGreen Corporation Print Stuff and Mail Utility Bills. First reading, Bill B. 12-25.
I move that we accept Bill B. 12-25 for its first reading and bring it back for its second reading by Tyler.
I motion, Alderman West, to approve Bill 12-25 for its first reading and bring it back by Tyler for its second reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Headley. Additional questions or comments?
I would pretty much answer from the previous question.
The email I sent you to Kathy, the overall labor savings, the time savings on topic with this year is what?
It takes approximately 30 minutes of printer time to print the cards that we're sending out now and then it takes three people approximately half an hour or so to burst those cards and get them ready to go to the post office, so it will be some time saving. And it will cost less to print the one-page sheet than it costs in printer time and toner to print the cards every month.
And you don't have custom forms now?
We've got the card stock.
That goes along.
Right. We won't have to store that or anything, they'll store it at their location. We just send them an electronic file and.
All therapists say aye.
Aye.
All pose the same sign.
6-0, Mayor. Bill B. 12-26, first reading. An ordinance authorizing the city administrator to renew the scope of services agreement with Cook, Flatt, and Strobel Engineers, PA for the 2012-2014 contract period. First reading, Bill B. 12-26.
I move that we accept Bill B. 12-26 for its first reading and bring it back for its second reading by Tyler.
I motion, Alderman West, to approve Bill 12-26 for its first reading and bring it back by Tyler for its second reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Headley. Any discussion?
What's, was this going to be an extension or out or is this a?
There was a provision within the agreement to have an optional one additional year for the contract period. for the contract period and so we are using the current contract under the rates that they have and it's only on an as-needed basis.
Thank you, Alexa.
You're welcome.
Additional questions?
We're good.
Seeing none, all therapists say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Six-zero, Mayor. Bill B. twelve dash twenty-seven, first reading. An ordinance adopting the City of Green Valley Loss Control Manual. First reading, Bill B. twelve dash twenty-seven.
I move that we accept Bill number B. twelve dash four-seven for its first reading and bring it back for its second reading by Tyler.
I motion Alderman B to accept Bill twelve dash twenty-seven for its first read, bring it back by Tyler for its second read, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman West, any discussion?
This is gonna be like a in-house safety training kinda deal? Is that, I guess Jamie's gonna put all the hard work into this, right?
Well, I had, I had a group of people, but essentially what this is, is Midwest Public Risk, our insurance company requires that if we incorporate ourselves into their loss control program and follow basically the rules that they set, which have been set by standards showing and that safety does reduce rates and reduces workers' compensation claims and liability claims, things like that. If we follow those standards and those rules, then we will get money back on our premium payments as well as of course the added benefit of having safer employees and safer patrons in the city. And so yes, what this is, is a guideline to the training that we have been providing to our employees and we will continue to provide to our employees in each of the policies which is within the guideline and within the manual outlines that training and gives them a set standard to follow in certain situations.
So this'll give us a better body, we, like any insurance, we have, keep our claims low and now we, we get a return back out of the insurance company and we get a better rating for our insurance.
That's correct and you'll recall that Midwest Public Risk is our risk pool provider and being part of that risk pool means that we are part owners of that organization. So it's to our advantage to take an active role and an active interest in generating a loss control manual that our employees will follow because as we educate our employees, we reduce the exposure to risk that we take through that training and in turn that brings our loss ratios down, which in turn help to bring our premiums down. And as a, being a part of that pool and being an owner in that pool, it brings it down to our, so it reflects within our own premium statements and invoices.
So we're kinda self-insured up to a certain point though?
Right, and you have to understand that Midwest Public Risk is not an insurance company. Midwest Public Risk is a risk pool provider and it's taking other public entities that include other cities, other counties and now school districts as well and it brings all of them together. And so basically from our premiums, all of our premiums come in to help support that fund so that if there's ever any claims against it, it comes out of that pool that we end up helping each other through tragedies or through accidents and to help pay for those claims.
Thank you, Mayor.
Additional questions or discussion? Seeing none, all therapists say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Six-zero, Mayor. Resolution R. twelve dash zero-eight, a resolution declaring certain city equipment to be surplus and authorizing the sales and disposal thereof, resolution R. twelve dash zero-eight.
Mayor, I'd like to move that we accept resolution R. twelve oh-eight.
I motion Alderman Schaefer to approve resolution R. twelve dash zero-eight, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Scully, any discussion?
So what are we selling? The list is attached, within your binder. Basically, state law requires that anything that has any value must go to surplus and therefore we, we, I mean Ryan, put together a, and staff put together a list of items that were no longer needed or that we had utilized to the best of its ability, but because it does have at least some type of a salvageable value to it, we are required to surplus it through auction or the like. And so put the list together, that list was then shared with all of the departments to see if there was a need for that item and I don't know if any items were pulled. And so all the departments were given an opportunity to look to see if that item was needed. This is the result of that listing and so these are the items that we would send to surplus or auction.
Where is the surplus, online, is there a website that you can go to or...
Go ahead.
Most likely what we'll do is use a service like GovBid.com. That's about the easiest way to surplus that to MoDOT uses the City of Lee Summit. So anything that has a value to it is gonna go onto that website and will be auctioned off. I don't think that there's actually anything on the list that we're just going to scrap Aaron's old LiveScan machine, we're actually gonna be giving that to the City of Greenwood, they don't even have one, so we're trying to get that worked out as we speak, but other than that, we're gonna sell everything else.
Would this be on the channel, our city channel, where people could see what's available?
We could, yeah, we could actually put together a slide that would, you know, give the website that they could go to and the dates of the sale. I think the sales are usually about ten days long, so we could give people a timeframe if they wanted to go.
Anything additional? Seeing none, all therapists say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Next items, city attorneys' reports?
Nothing to report, I'm fine.
City administrators' staff reports?
Yeah, this time I'd like to defer to Kathy, she has an update for the board.
I just wanted to let everybody know that we have gone live on the new software for payroll, accounts payable and general ledger and check reconciliation. We processed the first payroll last week and nobody came into the office screaming or recite themselves, so it must went okay. We cut a batch of accounts payables checks and they're ready to go out and we made general entries and we're working on the bank rep. And next meeting, I should have a financial report for the city through the end of March to including your board packets.
I'd like to commend Kathy on this, she has worked very diligently and long hours and weekends to do this transition of this data from our, from Summit to ENCODE and it's gone seamlessly and that is because of all of her hard work and dedication and she's done an outstanding job and we're really fortunate to have her. I guess also Chief Ambrose has an update.
Just real quick, I just wanna give a reminder, I don't think we'll meet again before the shred event as well as the voluntary, voluntary prescription drug turn-in which will be April twenty-first, right out here in the parking lot from ten to twelve, so that's two Saturdays from now. Bring all your stuff. That's all yet.
That's it?
All right. Next items, Board of Alderman reports of comments, Alderman Beebe?
No, I just had one question, when they take the films here on ingredients, literally on the TV channel?
I believe on Wednesday, is that true, Jamie?
Just randomly, they just go through, they don't have any time.
It's just continuous, it's a little graphic.
Okay, that's all we have.
So why is some of them not getting sound, some aren't getting sound?
Yeah, we actually, that's why you're seeing us do this up here and trying to remember to turn it on, is to remember to everyone to have their mics on and to speak loudly and...
And some of my TVs, well, the sound doesn't come through at all, even the high office party, it does not come through.
And Alderman Beebe, you're not a lip reader? I know. Okay, we'll look at it. Yes, you bet.
Alderman West?
Yes, I want to tell Carrie that I've enjoyed sitting next to her this past year and good luck to you and hope to see you soon.
Alderman Scully?
Ryan, thanks for answering all the emails I've embargoed over the past couple of weeks. Appreciate it.
Alderman Scully?
Nothing, just kind of, Mayor.
Alderman Totten?
Yes, I'd like to see, if every one of you, bring a friend and come up there at nine o'clock in the morning because we are having, I'm bringing the petitions that we had to save our post office and I would like to just have a full house and everybody up here so the young lady doesn't have time to read a book or have a cup of coffee. And you can go back and tell Sam Graves what a wonderful group of people we are and we need some consideration. Thank you.
Alderman Schaefer?
Saying that Terry's been good working with you last year and gonna miss you.
I'm gonna miss it a lot.
Jamie did a real good job on putting this together with understanding for the insurance. Appreciate your effort with that and once again the staff are on the, you guys did a good presentation, but other than that, I hope everybody had a good Easter and thank you, Mayor.
Next items, Mayor's report, I just wanna give the Board FYI that Kathy is working on some things for us dealing with the water and sewer billing and winter averages and actual usage. I know this has been an issue in the past and it can't seem to please everyone, but I think, knock on wood, we may actually be able to please everyone on this issue, maybe a first. So, but it's looking like we'll be able to maybe do both and people can choose what they wanna be on. So we're working on that, so give us more information in the future about that, so we're working on that right now though, so that will be, that's something really, really good. Finally, I will wait till next week to say what I have to say about Alderman Beebe, I don't want to break down all my tonight, so. I will wait till next meeting, but, so. I have nothing else and we end up needing for an executive session, we will adjourn.
Right here, oh, I forgot. Yeah, you almost got it, bud. I'm letting them say something. That was six of them, no.